Okay. Take three. Welcome, everybody, to our Tuesday, September 3rd City Council meeting. This is our 6:00 PM workshop on public art funding. We'll do a quick, a quick roll call before we get started. Councilmember Van Orman?
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cargill?
Present.
I don't see Councilmember Spencer. Councilmember Dunn?
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Present.
All right, and I know Councilmember Spencer is home with, for medical reasons, and so hopefully he'll be joining us later. Do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Kennedy? I mean, sorry, Councilmember Spencer, I'm looking at you and thinking of him. We have a motion to excuse Councilmember Spencer?
So moved.
We have a second. A motion in a second. All in favor of excluding Councilmember Spencer, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right, we will excuse Councilmember Spencer.
Mayor, was it that youthful look that I?
It was. They definitely have more hair. All right, so we're going to go ahead and get started on our discussion on public art funding. We'll let Mark kick this off.
Thanks, Mayor, and I think that we've got some slides that we're going to present that kind of help frame the conversation. I believe also that Councilmember Dunn has some that he's going to share as well, and they will probably dovetail together pretty nicely. And so if you recall back to the July 2nd workshop, that was a joint workshop between the City Council and the Parks and Arts Commission, there was some discussion there about looking forward to 2025 and beyond, and there was some encouragement given to the commission from the council about being, the word used was bold, right? So come with some proposals that really kind of beefed up the art collection in the city of Liberty Lake, and more specifically like a plan for future implementation. And we also, earlier than that, but then also kind of revived the discussion during July 2nd was this concept of is there a dedicated funding source that we want to look at? And so the the purpose of tonight's discussion, and we can go in any direction that council wishes to go, the purpose of my portion of the discussion is to help narrow the focus on maybe some guardrails or guidelines surrounding a dedicated funding source that we may want to talk about. And so that's what we're going to focus on in addition to anything else that council wishes to discuss. And so Evan, if you go to the next slide, this is just kind of a reminder that public art can mean a lot of different things, right? You've got your kind of traditional sculptures in public places, but you also have other things. You have murals and things that wrap around garbage cans and benches and traffic signal control boxes and those kinds of things. You've got benches in parks, you've got lighting fixtures, you've got bridges across culverts that can be art pieces themselves, if not incorporating pieces of art, those kinds of things. And so as we talk through this concept of public art, don't necessarily focus your mind on one thing or things that we've traditionally had here. There's all kinds of opportunities to expand the public art collection that we can talk about at any given point. And we're not going to talk a whole lot about implementation tonight, although that's an important piece of this. And Evan, if you go to the next slide, I'll show you why. So from a public art program perspective, we have a public art program. We've had one for a while because we have a Parks and Arts Commission that is responsible through the ordinance to make recommendations about pieces of public art and that kind of thing. And you can see, and this is probably more complex than what I've made it here, but for the purpose of this discussion, we've got a planning piece that's made up of programming and funding, and we've got an implementation piece that's made up of citing, acquiring, and maintaining. Evan, if you go to the next one, and so like I mentioned, my portion of the discussion is strictly focused on the planning piece and more specifically the funding piece. And so that is not to diminish the importance of implementation. You have to have that in order to have a successful program, but we're not specifically going to talk about implementing tonight. We will save that for a future conversation. Because I think in order to have successful implementation, we've got to have a discussion about funding, and that's what we're intending to do tonight. And so if you look out across kind of the horizon to other cities across the country and see what's going on as it pertains to public art and how it's being managed from a city perspective, there are three primary models that are being used. Evan, if you can go to the next one.
Mark, real quick, if I could interrupt you, I just want to acknowledge that Councilmember Spencer has joined us around six, so just a moment ago. Our clocks are off, so I don't, Evan, if you can promote him to a panelist so I can see him, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. And so these three primary funding models are in place. And we're not going to spend a lot of time talking about one and two, although we can, if you choose to do that. Just to mention them, you've got a development-funded model, a private-funded model, and a city-funded model. And if Evan, you go to the next one, I'm going to go in order of popularity across the country. And so developer-funded is something that is seen very rarely, but it's in place in select municipalities throughout the country. And this is essentially where your program is funded through development activities. So similar to an impact fee that you would use to install infrastructure, you would essentially create the same kind of mechanism, and you would apply whatever you collected through that mechanism to the implementation of public art. And there are many cities that use this model, but one of the ones that uses it is Fountain Hills, Arizona. Next slide, please. And then if you look at the privately-funded model, we've got this next door. Spokane Valley uses this model. And so essentially, the program is funded through private sources. And so either people are donating pieces of art or they're donating money through fundraisers to acquire pieces of art. And so it's 100% private, privately sourced. And those pieces become property of the city, and the city manages and curates them, but the funding of the acquisition and install is done privately. And then finally, and most popularly, most commonly seen across the country as city-funded. And these are, you know, different styles of things that are happening, all funded through the annual budgeting process. And I wanted to point out that these are non-restricted funds. And the reason I point that out is because when you get, when we start talking about our budget, we want to make sure that we're not trying to draw funds that you can't use for certain purposes into a discussion about using them for public art, right? So for example, if you have a funding source that's restricted to A, you can't use that for anything other than A. And if A is not public art, we can't consider using that source for public art. And so I just want to qualify this by saying these are all non-restricted funds that we're talking about here. And so you've got a variety of different treatments that you see. You've got non-formula-based where it's essentially 100% city council discretion, right? Similar to what we would see here through the annual budgeting process where you're making proposals about different things and council is just voting, yay, I'm implementing that, or nay, I'm not implementing that. And you see a model like that in Windsor, Colorado, and among other places. I'm giving you one example of each of these things. And then by far, the most common approach is the formulaic model where you take some basis of something, and it's usually a capital program. And you say, I'm going to apply a formula to that basis, and then that's going to give me my funding source, right? And so you see most often cities taking their capital projects budget and saying some percentage of this, we're going to put into a dedicated art fund, and we're going to use that fund to acquire and and install public and maintain public art. An example of this is from Lake Oswego, Oregon. And you see this example in all over Washington State, Issaquah, Buren, all across the state. And so those are essentially the models that we're talking about that are valid models. They're used fairly commonly across the US. But like I said, by far, the most common is the city-funded model that's using some kind of formula. And those formulas vary drastically, right? You see as little as a quarter of a percent, up to as much as 5% in some places. And then you even have some cities that have what I would call like a super formula where if the project is over X million dollars, they're funding it up to, say, 10%. We're not recommending that. We're just saying you see a broad spectrum of different numbers being used in different ways. And like I said, all of these are non-restricted funds for the most part. And so Evan, if you go to the next slide, are there any questions about the models that that are out there and being used among different cities? Okay. Public art in Liberty Lake. So as I mentioned before, we have a public art program. We've had one for a while. And if you look back to September of 2007, we had ordinance 163 that was adopted, and it established the Liberty Lake Public Art Commission. And that ordinance was fairly detailed in its description of what that commission was to do, and it had quite a bit of language about citing, acquiring, installing, maintaining pieces of public art. Then fast forward to October of 2017, and ordinance 193, I'm sorry, 163, through the adoption of ordinance 245 was repealed. It was rolled into ordinance 245, which is the ordinance that created originally the Parks and Arts Commission. And then that was updated in April of 2018 with ordinance 245A. And although there's still language in ordinance 245A about public art, it is very limited in its scope as compared to ordinance 163. And so there is a sentence in there talking about the responsibility of the Parks and Arts Commission being to cite and acquire public art, but it's it's essentially a sentence in the entire ordinance, whereas ordinance 163 was mostly about that. So it's still in there. It's still part of the Parks and Arts Commission's responsibilities. But that may be something for a future discussion when we're talking about implementation that we may want to broaden and expand on the definitions of their responsibilities as it comes to setting some policy around the program, especially as it relates to acquisition and installation of art pieces. And so Evan, if you can go to the next slide, if we were to take, say, the formulaic model from the city-funded model and look at what that would look like as applied to the city's capital facilities plan, we tried to make these numbers as legible as possible on the screen. And so what you're seeing there are numbers that are in the thousands, right? So the 2, comma, 3, 4, 2 in the upper left is 2,342,000, right? And so you would carry that across. And so if you're applying this to the bottom line, you could see that we're talking about $13.7 million in CFP, and you know, whatever percentage you apply to that would be a number. But then if you remember the piece that we talked about with the qualifying funds or the non-restricted funds, you start to, and reasonability when it comes to, say, for example, incorporating a piece of public art into, say, a comprehensive plan, right? What would, how would you implement that? Without some very specific guidelines or purchasing a piece of equipment, say, what would the public art component of that be? And then we've got, and in some cases, it's more than 50% of our entire CFP budget are projects by others that the city is contributing to in some way. But we list in our capital facilities plan. And so are those included? Are they not included? How would we ensure that proper amounts of funds are being set aside for art pieces in those cases? And so if you just made the assumption, and this again is not a recommendation, but if you made the assumption, and Evan, if you go to the next one, that we're simply talking about those things that have some tangible delivery, road projects, pedestrian projects, parks and public facilities projects, we're talking about a budget that's more in line with what you see minus those other pieces, right? 4.6 million, if you go across the the years, four and a half, six and a half, et cetera. And so if you applied, applied a percentage to those, and we've given some examples, 1% and 2%, you can see what that annual amount would be. And so this amount would be dedicated to the use, for use and acquiring and maintaining public art. And so this amount would be essentially deposited in the public art fund, which already exists. And it would be used for that purpose. And of course, council can set any guideline it wants to, any rule that it wants to, any amount that it wants to. These are just examples. If you look at the cities across the country that are doing this, like I said, they're anywhere from a quarter of a percent up to, say, 5% at the highest level. And so we've given you a couple of examples to kind of chew on with some associated numbers applied against our actual capital facilities plan. And so that really is, Evan, if you can go to the next one, really just to cue up the discussion, again, to kind of put the question to council as we talk about this, what are those guidelines? How would you like staff to come back with an actual proposal or recommendation of a ordinance policy, whatever the mechanism is going to be, so that we can, we can really get this moved forward? And then with that, I will turn the floor over to Councilmember Dunn and allow him to talk through any of his presentation. And I would say before that, before we transition, are there any questions about what you've heard here that I can help answer before we transition to Councilmember Dunn?
Mayor Pro Tim.
I just want to clarify, Mark, on that second to last slide that you had. The 1% or the 2% that you're referring to there is 1% or 2% of the capital facilities plan.
So, correct. Right. So it would be, for example, if
Not necessarily a specific revenue source, but of the plan itself.
Right. So for example, if you, and I didn't provide the entire itemized plan, right? But if you were to look down through the capital facilities plan, you would see things in there like reconstruction of Country Vista Boulevard, right? And it's got a dollar a figure associated with it of 2.2 million somewhere in there. So if you chose 1%, right, you would take 1% of that project if that was a qual, from qualifying funds, and that amount would be deposited for use in public art.
Thank you.
Cool. Evan, if you've got a slide deck there, if you could hit that, please. Great. So as introduction, this is an action, I actually introduced this original work at 2016 to this council in the discussion conceptually of public art. It had come to a head after the originally introduced ordinance 163 from September 2007, just wasn't really producing any art. It was kind of an interesting observation. Next, please. So without really going into philosophy, art, what it presents, you know, I think we all have our own perceptions of it, but I think there's always an important question of people, why? These are some observations that I've collected from some different places. Next, please. And I'll ask a sound check from Councilmember Kurtz. Annie, you're out there, right? Because some of these images, I think you'd actually add it into this just for consideration?
Yes, I'm here.
Cool. So, you know, we'll just refer to public art as it's stationed and positioned in public domain, and that's really important. I'll be direct. Art in collection is a really important private, I would say, asset. But that art in exposition and exhibition, I'd say, for the public puts it to a new place. So, you know, public is what I really want to focus on. Next slide. So I just want to trot through a couple of examples of some of these. So next one. So you guys recognize this, right? Midtown Manhattan, it's about 55th and 6th. The date on this is 1966, but it's become this really iconic work. The work of Robert Indiana specifically. It was immortalized on a postage stamp. But what it's become is an icon of New York. So the exhibition of art in public actually becomes strongly associated to place. So next with a great example. So this is undeniably a component of, yeah, you got it, Spokane. This is on t-shirts. This is all over the place. It becomes a representation of a place. Now, fun moment, Sister Paula Mary Turnbull, 1974 is the work here. She actually taught at the Holy Names Academy. So what another really important part, I think, of public art is the who in participation. That, you know, when you now put together in place, people from the same place, that creates an incredibly enduring effect. Next one. You guys recognize this one? Probably walked by it a couple of times. Harold Belais, and 1978. And this is Spokane's Centennial Celebration. So Belais is another really epic local contributor. He recently passed. But that, yeah, his first commissioned work in the community was in 1951 on the Ridpath Hotel. So this was yet another one of these iconic pieces that, you know, fell out when the city was looking for a centennial, will retrieve his work. And yeah, that's appreciated. Next, please. This is paving details next to the Rotary Fountain. So this art serves both as fundraising. If you can see the detail on this one, there's actually people's names on the fish. So this is where we're invoking art in the utility of development. Combined, this particular one is actually a public-private partnership, the work of both the Rotary, Spokane, and also the city. But just great examples, tributes to how that comes together. Next, please. Now, it could be just a bike rack, right? But given the opportunity, that'd give you something to think about. So I'm not familiar with, oh, Vancouver. And I'm looking at the little icons that are associated there, but yeah, it's like, I think that's interesting to combine those together. Next, please. The work on the left, that's again Harold Belais, that fountain. That was executed 2005. That's the larger work. So you can kind of see some relative visual cues in common to some of Harold's other work. But it's a really great moment to say now art has a unifying connection in the community where these installations have happened. Next. You guys recognize this one? This actually is Vietnam Veterans Memorial. The artist Deborah Copenhagen Fellows in 1985. She's actually a native of North Idaho. This sits overlooking the the, in Riverfront Park. And it's called the Lilac Bowl. It looks out over that. And it's, it's got some really, I would say, significance. Deborah Copenhagen Fellows was actually a student of Sister Paula Mary Turnbull, which you may recognize visually, some cues here to the garbage code. Yeah, okay. Next image, please. And you may recognize this one, which, yes, as a matter of fact, is the very same artist. Prepared in 1981. Fun trivia on this one is, you guys seen it with the pipe in? They bring the pipe out for special occasions. Because there's a moment where it's like, ooh, that's kind of a little vandalism thing, you know, kids on a college campus, that could get pretty crazy. So what I think here is really great is that a artist is recognized now in the community and is able to place installations. Yeah, five years prior to the Riverfront Park installation, Bing showed up in the campus at Gonzaga. Next one. Annie plays this one. Is there any backstory on this one, Annie?
No, just kind of what it says. You know, part of, part of my interest in the public art pieces of this came from when I was at the AWC conference in Vancouver. And so they had some of these things, and you can see the description here on the slide, using the existing physical environment. So just little pieces of art that are, you know, kind of hidden around the city. So this was just one of the examples that I found that I thought was kind of interesting and would be fairly easy, I think, to put forward.
Oh, totally. Cool. Next, please. Couple more examples. Recognize that one. This is 1985 and David Govadere. So again, a really epic, I would say, Washington State artist. If you hit next for a second, you might recognize some other places in this guy's work. That work, which overlooks the Columbia Advantage, that title, Grandfather Cuts Loose the Ponies, from Washington State's 1989 Centennial. So both of these now are synonymous with place. I mean, you look at the people, the joy of running together, by the way, is the title of the one in Riverfront Park. And it's like, you know, right where you're at. And I always, you know, when we were doing road trips with the kids, when you saw like the wild horses, you knew where you were at. And you knew how many hours you got left in the road trip. So the association to place and art, it all fuses together to create a sense of location. Next one, please. And it can be temporary. Annie, you got this one? Is it chalk?
Yeah, it looked like it was chalk, and it's in the city of Spokane. But what a way to engage people in the community to, maybe you're not an artist, but you could do a little bit of art that's not permanent. So I think this one was interesting. Some of these were things I had never really thought about or seen until I started doing a little bit of research. So I think there's just a variety of different things that perhaps that we haven't thought of, perhaps the planning, the Parks and Arts Commission hasn't thought of that are out there. And there are a few more slides coming up that, that again, I wouldn't have thought of some of those things until I started looking.
No kidding. Next one. This one's kind of fun. Annie, you know about this one, right?
Yeah, so I mentioned this, I think, when I came back from AWC about how they have the the poetry. Well, this, this one was poetry in celebration of Poetry Month. But putting things on the sidewalk, particularly in like a Seattle where it rains very often, where you could find the poetry. And the cool story with this was that they celebrated Poetry Month and put poems all across the city and sort of like a scavenger hunt from people in the community. So think about how we could engage maybe some of our youth, some of our kids to put something in different places throughout the city.
It isn't necessarily giveaway in this image, but it's actually a hydrophobic paint applied to the concrete. And so what you see visually actually only becomes obvious when it's wet. So it's a really interesting novel moment where in the moment that it rains, all of a sudden, the sidewalks light up with poetry. I mean, I thought that was really novel object. Next one, please. Pedestrian spaces and walkways. You could make them interesting. Vancouver. Yeah, those guys are busy. Next one.
Dan, what does this mean?
Sorry, go ahead.
Bulb outs. What does that mean? Bulb outs?
I, it may be the title of the work, Linda.
So it refers to pedestrian safety. So as we're talking about, you know, our master plan with bikes and with sidewalk master plans, this could be one of the ways to enhance safety through art, making spaces visible. So those are people installing crosswalks to make the pedestrians in the space where they walk across more visible. So you'll see that the round area is the bulb out. It's just the kind of art that it is, but there are ways to weave safety and art together, which I thought was kind of interesting.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, next one. And yeah, these are just case studies of where these can be applied. Ideas that aren't necessarily just what you'd usually expect. And the next one. So to drive into some specific examples, hit next a couple of times, or just once, please. So in 1999, Cordelated adopted their ordinance at the amount 1.33 of capital project costs. And so what that infers directly is 1% for the actual attribution and placement of a work and 3/10ths then related to administrative costs supporting its work. Next, please. Parks Commission sets aside 50% of each piece for maintenance. So here, they're just talking about policies, financial policies updated to reflect amounts being dedicated in funds for specific aspects of how the art comes together. Next one. So in Cities Spokane Public Code, their ordinance at 1% of capital, capital project and 0.5 can be converted from the existing project into the art fund. Now, what this means is when the city of Spokane commits to a specific capital project, they said on that project, there will be some small aspect of art delivered. You know, you can look at it as within an overpass, there will be something visually presented which accompanies that project, which we recognize as some aspect of art. Alternatively, can be converted or moved into an art fund at that percentage level. Next. So yeah, these are tiny texts. Some quick looks over and around other cities comparable in size sometimes. 1% in Renton, half a percent capital, up to 5 million in Issaquah with a quarter capital projects above. So there's a sliding scale against a specific amount. And City of Buren, 1%. So this is just looking around at what other cities have taken as action. Uh, next slide, please. Now, I didn't necessarily, did you add this slide? Can you explain this one a little bit, Annie?
Oh, it's kind of a Uh, it's kind of a reiteration of the history of the Spokane, um, ordinance with their percent for art ordinance. Um, which was in a previous slide, um, but it also talked a little bit about, um, partnerships for art, that's the name of, um, the slide, but. There are different ways for cities to partner on the Spokane Public Facilities District, the Davenport Arts District, the City of Spokane Parks and Recs Department. There's other private organizations that the city, um, could partner with on art. Um, sort of, kind of in line with what, um, what Mark was saying earlier with sort of that public-private partnership for art.
Yeah. So partners, uh, to deliver, next slide please. And next slide. So Mark did cover in detail, next slide please. Um, these are some of the duties established in the um, uh, one sixty-three ordinance. Um, it was extraordinarily specific in its actions and. This was what seeded this conversation in twenty sixteen as we all looked at each other and says, well, where's the art? And what we realized is this was an organization, a bit of a commitment of volunteers in the community. To go through selection process and other activities, but without really, we'll say, any true mechanism to actually do it. And I want to reiterate, um, a specific exercise, um, on the placement of the Harvard Road North Roundabout, uh, that's the one at Mission Avenue. Uh, this is where a freeway ramp intersects Harvard, intersects Mission Avenue. Um, there was actually originally a budget amount set aside for the delivery of a public work in the middle of the roundabout. We assembled, selected a ca- a collection of candidates from the community for the purpose of that selection. We threw a call to artists, received bids from many, uh, I'm going to say down selected to three. Uh, one of which is now, um, in the city of uh, Spokane, you may recognize Dance of the Rainbow. Um, this is a uh, fish-like projecting, jumping out, it's next to the con- uh, convention center. Um, that was actually going to be in Liberty Lake, it was kind of interesting. Um, but, uh, and also from Ralph, uh, Getzinger, he actually did the, uh, mural on the side of our, um, um. Now in Pavilion Park. Anyway. What I want to bring forward is, um, those people, that action, three finalists, and at the last moment, the project was declared somewhat over budget. And that funding was eliminated. It was, in my opinion, um, a very bad showing. Uh, we had, um, called to artists to communities, we had taken the time and energy of our volunteers. And at the end of the day, um, there was actually nothing to be delivered. So, um, the hope then was to say, what else could we do? Next slide please. So you guys know where that is too, right?
Yep.
It's on the way off the alleyway. And this was really fun because this, yeah, Arturo is Spokane Valley, July, these are just a couple of examples, now we got a ton more wonderful. Art installations here in our community now, but back in sixteen, you could talk to that. Next. You talk to that, which, um, you guys know where that is, that's, um, next to our, uh, Town Square Park. Um, which is privately owned, uh, exhibited, uh, on private property, uh, by Greenstone, which is great, you might. Recognize it as the work of Harold Belaise.
And that was prior to two thousand seven.
Yeah, so these are, you know, private people in the, or in the community that, uh, choose to present it. Um, next slide please. So what follows then is a potential of how this could be implemented for our work. Uh, we have a municipal finance policy twenty fifty. Um, in which, uh, a suggestion potentially is that for capital improvement projects over the amount of five hundred K. We would call one percent, now these are city-funded, this is a suggestion. City-funded projects over that amount, a, a percentage, I call it, allocated to art in that project. Alternatively, for specific projects under that value, five hundred K is a target. One percent as the amount would then be contributed to a fund. In support of what may be other works, because small projects, not a lot of money, not a lot of potential then for the impact of something to be added. So, but at least you could take what would be an amount and contribute that to a fund, which over time could provide significant impact. So, you know, this was conceptual discussion of how such our finance policy could be amended to support that. The council could, of course, allocate dollars as needed in a budget action if it were needed. But the intention is that through a finance policy, we are assuring that through capital acquisition, capital construction, we are contributing to some degree. Funds which will be used for this purpose. Next slide. Um, these, let's see, uh, this particular one, Mission Overlay, eleven thousand. So imagine what an eleven thousand dollar installation in support of that might look like. You know, think of a small something where that could be. You know, but we would make a commitment to say, when we, when we as a city go out and execute on a capital project, that's what we'd like to do. Um, library improvements, the potential of its amount. This is what we would commit, say, commit as, you know, if it were one percent for consideration. Uh, next slide. These are, um, other things in, in this that are under that five hundred K amount. So these in theory then would just be contributions that would be made to a public art fund. For the purpose of, in the future, creating something. And yeah, total projects under five hundred, I believe, from our current capital through the plan, so that's just a case study. And I, you did a, you did a way better job, Mark, in attributing through table what those amounts would be, so. Uh, next slide. Yeah. Um, I think this is a quote I collected from one of the Cordelain City Council members, has taken three minutes. Um, but that, um, it's a, uh, has the ability to, like I say, foster place and purpose. The recognition of a place and the association visually, so, um, value, so. Well, that's what I prepared for this discussion.
Hey. Thanks, Dan and Annie for going through that. Um, so I guess we move into discussion, it's six thirty-eight, so just be mindful of the time, uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, thanks everyone for bringing this forward, I, I wholeheartedly support trying to get some sort of a dedicated funding source. I have a couple of, uh, ju- just reminder questions for my own. Um, s- sake, Mark, can you remind me what the current amount is or what the latest amount was that we put into? Public art last year? Or the?
Yeah, um, Mayor, if I might bring that up.
Yeah. Sadie and Kyle?
Uh, I will bring that up for you here.
Great, great, thank you. Um, I guess my second question is. Um, or, or when I started thinking about this issue, I was trying to think of, uh, a way we could. Dedicate one of our specific funding sources that we get each year. Rather than taking it out of or charging it as an extra fee on top of one of the budget items, so for example, if we did the. You know, one percent of the capital projects, my concern about that. Uh, about doing it that way is that, one, that increases slightly the cost of the project. And then, two, if there's ever a circumstance where capital projects maybe dip for a year, then the, the amount that we are sending to. Um, to this art budget would also go down, so. Just one other item for consideration that we could do. Uh, is we could say, okay, we're going to dedicate one percent of. Sales tax revenues every year to this particular fund, or we could do. You know, a half a percent of property tax, or what, you know, uh, pick, pick your source. Um, but to me, that would provide a more sustainable track, and it's, I think, a little bit easier to understand. I mean, the State Department of Transportation, I believe. Ten percent of a, of a, um, a state DOT project has to go to public art, so this is not that unusual, it's just a. Uh, a matter of how we go about figuring out, uh, the funding, and then on the, kind of the. Uh, second leg of this, in addition to whatever the city might do, um. I, I think it would really be a great idea if we could figure out a way to incentivize local developers. To put more art on their, when they, when they build a project. Whether that be saying, you know, we're going to waive a certain fee, or you'll get some sort of. You know, I, I don't know, pick, pick whatever you want, but if you submit art on this project that you're going to build. We will do something, obviously the art would have to be approved by, uh, the commission, but then. Um, that could incentivize local developers to perhaps do more on their specific land. Uh, that they're building on, but whatever way we go about this, I think, uh, we're headed in the right direction, it's just trying to. Figure out what the formula is going to be and what, what funding mechanism is going to come from.
Agreed.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim to jump in, in twenty twenty-three, the city budgeted sixty-five thousand dollars for, uh, public art for capital outlay. And seventy-four thousand in twenty twenty-four.
Great, so I mean, one percent, for example, of sales tax revenue that we budgeted this year would be fifty-nine thousand, just for kind of a. Um, uh, as we're comparing the two.
Yeah, and to me it would be a, a base, it does, it does, nothing would preclude the, the council from adding more.
Right.
Any other, uh, council member, Kurt?
Um, I just wanted to say that I like the idea, um, of looking at some different funding sources, um, that Mayor Pro Tim has just. Uh, noted, and I'm wondering if, um, for our next discussion on this, if. Um, we could have just a couple more scenarios with some of the ideas that he outlined, whether it's property tax or. Um, the sales tax or, you know, the, the. Um, earlier slide that we had regarding, um, the capital improvements, because. Um, I do, I do appreciate that, that we want to have a sort of a steadier income source. Um, and something that is clear, so I like that idea, I, again, also just wanted to say that I. Um, I like the idea of the incentive for development in art, and I, I'm assuming that would maybe come. Through our development code or some other way, um, but I'd like to explore that more too.
Thank you, anybody else? Councilmember Kennedy?
I think it's a, a great program, I think it's something that the city could do and do very, very well. On it, we're, we're continually a very fast-growing city, we have land, as I've mentioned before, so that allows for expansion and stuff. There will become a time when that, we're not going to have that. So if we invest the extra funds we have now in art, that's something that's going to be here long after, we no longer have. A, a lot of development to be able to pull one percent or something like that into, into art on it. Um, in two thousand seventeen, we put a lot of discussion in this to be able to put this together. Uh, unfortunately, I think what happened in two thousand seventeen, when we were setting this all up, we got so much discussion, we got lost in the weeds. Of how it was going to be done, and it finally came up, there's that there'd be a dollar amount that they would re- uh, committee could request. And then aggressively go out there and get the business up. And I, I'm excited about that, i- if it's going to be the one percent, two percent, whatever it is, or we come up with a budget, I think it's, I encourage, as I did. In our combined meeting, that I hope that the, the committee is aggressive. And asking for funds, but at the same time, be aggressive and utilize those funds. On it, it's, uh, seven years later, uh, I, I agree with Councilman Dunn when that art was proposed at that roundabout. I thought that was a great idea, uh, suddenly it got. It got derailed unfortunately, because it started coming too well, it was too expensive. Well, what is too expensive? I mean, in the long run, you know, I can remember being in Spokane on the Planning Commission. And they were talking about Expo seventy-four, and they were going to put the runners up. And I remember that was extremely controversial. It was controversial because it was going to be too much money and it was going to take up too much space. Now, here we are, fifty years later, and I never hear anybody complain about the space it took up for the dollar amount. So I think the program that we're looking at, uh, I hope that we aggressively. Move forward to making decisions on whatever percentage is going to be, encourage the committee to. Come up with these ideas, let's aggressively start putting effort into where we can put the art. Uh, one of the challenges ran in two thousand seventeen was who made this decision, was it the committee or was it the council? And what it came down to, it had to be a collaborative effort between the two. It couldn't be like Spokane Valley where they don't have an art program. They donate money to that organization, they go out and do their own thing and build up their own art. But then they have to go back to the council to say, do you want this art? I hope we don't get in that position, because I do understand that Spokane Valley still has a march sitting in a warehouse, but they've not put anywhere. You know, I, I mentioned in our combined meeting that Betty and I have been very fortunate to do some travel over the years. And what we remember in the travels is the art in the cities. That's what we remember. We don't remember the golf courses, we don't remember the restaurants, other than, do you remember that restaurant we went to, it was really cool? We relate it to the art that we saw. That that was a cool one, you can go down into Walla Walla area, into those small towns there, that they have no more growth. They haven't had growth for years in their residential or their commercial. But what is it that people who travel through there remember through the, the wine areas? It's the art. It's the art on the size of the buildings that are a hundred years old. I hope that we aggressively go at this, bring up the funding. Collaboratively work between the council and the committee. To, let's start getting quickly, put some art out there, it's a really nice quality of stuff, thank you.
Right, any other, outside councilmember Spencer and then councilmember Baldwin, councilmember.
Thanks, Mayor, um, so, uh, I definitely agree with the idea of, um. Benchmarking the funding to an income source rather than an, an expense. Um, also, I like the idea of the public-private partnerships. Um, I'm considering, you know, what, what it might look like if we took some of those funds, whatever we allocate. And essentially throw it out to the community to say, hey, we will match up to this certain amount. If you will put up the funding for this particular project and allow that private. Uh, partner to, to put, put up a plaque or, you know, something to where we, we're giving them a bunch of recognition, but we're basically extending our dollars.
Nice, alright, um, next we have, uh, councilmember Ball.
Um, well, I'm all for more public art, we certainly need it, because we don't have all the. Bills and whistles that, you know, some of these other cities that we've seen examples of, but, um. I'm having a hard time embracing the idea of incentivizing developers to, um. To help out with the public art, because. What if the project goes haywire and they, this is going to be the last of their priorities, so, um, that would be the one idea I really don't like.
Councilmember Van Orman?
I really like the idea of what, um, councilmember Spencer. You're back in, uh, early days, we were talking about three percent. But back then, three percent was, well, a lot of money, now it's even more so. I do like the idea of public-private. Um, even the schools have a certain percentage of their building costs that go to art. Couple of other things I thought about too, when we're talking about art, is the Rock Terrance there at Moon, Half Moon Park. And right there in front of Liberty Building for ballards. So, yes, we do have a little bit here and we could use a little bit more.
Great, alright, any other comments before we move on, it sounds like, go ahead.
Just one, uh, one more real, uh, quick thing. I, I, I think it's important not only for the city, but also for the citizens of the city to feel like they're involved in this, and so. When I talk about incentivizing, I'm talking about not only incentivizing. People might build something in the city, but also the citizens, so I liked the idea of what Jed said, I also like, uh, some of the comments that. Councilmember Kennedy, uh, made about trying to get the people involved, uh, and. You know, maybe it is a match, maybe it's something where we say, hey, if we've got a. You know, a, a ten thousand dollars, let's say, for the sake of argument, for this one plaque, will some, or for this one sculpture, will somebody match that? For another ten, so we can light it up at night or something like that, so I think there are many different avenues that we can go on here.
Well, and there's also an opportunity, I'm going to a, a follow-up, um, kind of celebration, so the, uh. The Liberty Lake Better Together Fund has now been fully fun- funded to twenty-five thousand dollars and they're still getting donations. But they are, you know, through Anovia five oh one C three, so that might be something, since. Somebody may, may be reluctant to donate ten thousand dollars to the city, because it's not a write-off, we're not a five oh one C three, but maybe that's something we could work. With them on being the recipient and then however, like, uh, that works, but there, I think there are some other. Entities that we could involve in something like this to be the catalyst to encourage those donations. Wait, councilmember Dunn?
Um, uh, question Kyle, um, can you confirm, I, does the city right now have a fund specifically? Uh, for use in, in public art?
So yeah, our, our mechanism for that is Fund One Eleven, that's our Parks and Arts Fund, and so that is essentially the Parks and Arts Commission's. That's their, that's their fund by which they operate and, and procure and, and. Do all sorts of things from operations to capital to maintenance, and so what. What I'm hearing here is a potential to augment that, to include all of these different scenarios.
Um, yeah, I mean, what, what I'd reflect on is, what we're, what we're thinking through is some mechanism now to create. Sustainable, um, funding to that fund. Uh, some, some way to assert that it's not solely a discretionary budget action. Uh, for once a year, the council to put something into that, uh, fund, so I think that's what I've heard here.
Yeah, so.
Can do that through that process, and so what we do in the Real Estate Exercise Tax Fund is we create a line item specifically for an infrastructure improvement. And that was, that is what we can do, kind of through this mechanism, is that we can create a line item that says. Framer Parkway, uh, public art improvements, and it's this exact line item, and it's this exact piece, uh, however council wants to split that out.
Alright, the one, one thing that I, I know we have. All right. The one, one thing that I, I know we haven't necessarily done, at least when we started, I know there were some discussions on, you know, okay, well, the Parks and Arts Commission comes forward, say it's $35,000 and if they don't spend it. I know in the past, there have been council members who are no longer here, who are opposed to still putting that money in the fund and letting it roll over and grow. But we've actually been, you know, spending it and, and actually putting that money in recently. So I just want to make sure, it sounds like everybody would be on board to letting that fund grow. But we, we did have, we did have some of those discussions in the past as well. And at one point we weren't, if it wasn't spent, you lost it. Now we're finally in the position where if it's not spent, it rolls over. All right. So we are at 6:52. Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
If I may interject, what you're saying there also is that Jen might remember this when we got into the discussions, is it did come up at the discussion is that if, if we put it in there, are they going to utilize the things that are there? The benefit is, is to allow it to roll over. The benefit there, I think we lost, we got lost in the weeds is this. The group may be looking at something that's a large piece of art that's going to take four years to pull together. And it's X number of dollars. Well, we know that we could, if we have the rollover, we know that we can budget for that and continue to move ahead and still have additional funding for some of the art that we could do sooner.
Yep, exactly. All right. Well, it is 6:53. There's no further. Yes, go ahead.
Before we get off topic, I, I need, we need some guidance and direction on what we bring back to you. What are the next steps? We, we heard a lot of input, a lot of great input. What, what do you want to see coming back so that we can start to continue to refine this?
Well, let's go, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and I think Councilmember Kurtz, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the requests that she had made, and I, I think would be good as well, is to have like three or four different options. Maybe, maybe, maybe we do do it via the capital projects or capital facilities. Maybe it's via the sales tax, maybe it's via the property tax, maybe like we have four or five different options we can choose from. And then per what Councilmember Spencer had to say as well, a couple of different potential scenarios for public-private partnerships or incentives or something like that. Is that, is that accurate?
And I, I've got a bunch of notes too, Mark, that we can maybe work through and come back with some, some examples. And Councilmember Kurtz, you've got your hand up.
No, I was just going to say what Mayor Protem just said, that list of maybe a couple of different funding sources. And then what some of the other, you know, their other options might be, whether, and how they would be mechanized and, and how we would do that. Just so we can start looking at how to do that. And, and I would like to keep this on the agenda as a discussion so we can keep moving forward until we complete it, if that's all right with everybody, since it seems like there's momentum to move forward.
And it would be good to have this decided for the 2025 budget, obviously.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would also encourage to have the Parks and Art, if they could come to the council during that time and let us know what do we have in the process right now of art that we're working on? And what do we think of timeframe on that? And what's the dollar amount we think that we're going to be utilizing for with the existing funds, but also future funds? I think that will assist us in making a decision.
Great. All right. Sounds like we've got some things to discuss and for now, it is 6:55 and we will adjourn till 7:00 PM when we will return to our regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. This is time for our regular session. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. We are going to start with our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And since I didn't ask anybody, I guess I'll do the invocation. Please join me.
Your Father, please guide us in our discussions today so that discussions are respectful and thoughtful and in the best interest of our residents. We do a really good job of listening to each other and listening to our citizens to do what's best for them. And as always, please be with our first responders, our military, police, fire. As they continue to battle things around our cities and around the world, keep us safe. Especially right now, our firefighters with all the breakouts that we've had recently, please keep them, keep them in, in your arms and keep them safe. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Start with our roll call. We do have a couple of councilmembers joining us online, and I will also note that our city attorney is joined by phone. So, and so he is listening in and if he needs to weigh in, we will unmute him so he can join us. So go ahead and start, Mayor. Councilmember Van Ormen here. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right. All present and accounted for. So we will go ahead and move to agenda approval. Are there any requests for amendments to the agenda? Okay.
Not hearing any changes. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 7-0. We have an approved agenda. Moving on quickly now to citizen comments. So for those in chambers though, looks like most everybody here is here in an official capacity. But for those here in chambers, we have these yellow half sheets next to the door over there. If you would like to make a comment, please sign in. And when you get to the podium, introduce yourself and let us know if you are a citizen of the city of Liberty Lake. And online, if you would like to make a comment, please send a message to our meeting host and he will get my attention. Three-minute limit, any topic. We ask that the comments remain respectful. And we will allow you your three minutes and I will stop. If, if you're going over that, I will stop you. So we have first up and maybe only up, Mark Saba. Welcome.
I'm Mark Saba. Yes, I am a resident of Liberty Lake. I am here to discuss item number 11B, Winter Glow Spectacular Donations or Sponsorship. As you all know, inflation has hit, winter has, has hit everybody, including Winter Glow. And our expenses with Winter Glow have extre, has extremely increased over the last couple of years, just like everything else. In addition to the 20% increase to the year's donations recommended by the Parks and Arts Commission, I would greatly appreciate you, the city council approving tonight's 11B. When you later discuss it this evening. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. If there's anybody else in chambers or there's, is there anybody online? We have, okay, welcome Tom Solberg. I can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thanks for the great discussion on the proposed funding for the Parks and Arts or for arts, public arts in general. And I want to speak in favor of the proposal or consideration of upping the amount of contribution to Winter Glow for this next year. And thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining. All right. Do we have anybody else online? Not seeing any, just a reminder, there will be opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting as well. So we will move on then to announcements, proclamations and special presentations. Tonight's a pretty special night. We have a proclamation for Suicide Awareness Month, and I'm trying to find my copy. Kelsey will enter, will go ahead and start it off while I find my copy to finish it up.
This is the proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness and foster understanding about suicide and mental health. And whereas suicide is a serious public health issue that affects individuals and communities across the nation, including our own city of Liberty Lake. And whereas our state and nation have experienced a concerning number of suicides in the past year, highlighting an urgent need for proactive measures and support systems to address mental health challenges. And whereas the city of Liberty Lake is committed to promoting mental health, well, excuse me, promoting mental wellness and ensuring that all residents have access to the resources and support they need. And whereas it is crucial to provide education, encourage open dialogue and eliminate the stigma surrounding mental health and suicide. And whereas we recognize the importance of supporting organizations and initiatives that offer help and resources to those in crisis. And whereas resources available to those in need include the Washington Recovery Helpline at 1-866-789-1511 and the 24/7 National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 988.
All right. So before I go on, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
Madam Mayor, I move the council to support the proclamation.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor of supporting this proclamation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 7-0. Therefore, be it proclaimed that September 2024 be recognized as National Suicide Prevention Month in our city. We encourage all residents to participate in local events, engage in conversations about mental health and support initiatives aimed at preventing suicide and fostering a community of understanding and compassion. We call upon everyone in our community to be vigilant, to offer support to those who may be struggling and to reach out for help if needed. By coming together, we can make a significant impact in saving lives and improving mental health outcomes for all. Dated 3rd of September 2024. And since we're on the topic, I'll remind everybody that the VA and Disabled Veterans of America have come together and they're doing what is hopefully the first annual 5K walk to raise awareness. It is on September 21st, kicks off 8:00 AM from Liberty Creek Elementary. It's nothing official. You don't have to register. It's a show up. Maybe in the future then it'll become, you know, maybe more of a race. But this is truly a, an awareness walk. And so we encourage everybody to show up, to show their support. But thank you for this. Okay. Next up, we are already up to city council reports, city council reports. Do we have anybody who'd like to make a report from the council? Councilmember Dunn?
I just volleyed that STA continues an executive search. We're going to have some public outreach meetings to form and assure the job description being used is in everybody's best interest. That's the biggest update.
Great. Any other council reports? Councilmember Van Ormen.
I have a couple of things out of the Liberty Lake Lions. We've got the bed races coming up at the end of this month. So those of you that want to get your sneakers going, Teams of Five is what we're looking for. And we also have it already on the, the planning to go ahead and install the bricks inside of the arboretum. So that should be October 8th. So those of you that haven't gotten a brick, now's your time.
Great. Thank you. All right. We have Councilmember Kurtz up next.
I'm just wanted to update that we attended the second session virtually of the Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute through AWC. The mayor and I were there with our team virtually, which was a little different. And it was a good experience. And then we'll be headed to Everett next month, I think. Well, it is this month. Anyway, it's coming up fast. And then just a reminder that teachers all across town, on kids, back to school night was tonight. So just wanted to make sure everybody knows the kids are going back to school and to stay safe out there and, and drive the speed limit.
Great. Thank you. We have Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank members of LLPD and other, any other staff members that were involved with that welcoming home of Ike Raby this Saturday, this last Saturday afternoon. He's gone through a, a lot of challenges over the last couple of months with his health. And so it's pretty exciting to see all the love and support for a Liberty Lake community member.
Great, great turnout. I was, I was on the other side of town, missed it, but it looks like the, the turnout was fantastic. Glad he's, he's doing a little bit better. All right. Any other council reports? All right. Next we have the Ordinance Review Committee. I've handed out the update. I don't know if anybody here, Annie, I forgot, I should have emailed you a copy of this. Is it Councilmember Kennedy or Cargill? Do you want to go through this or do you want me to just do a quick update? Okay. All right. So I'm not going to go through everything in here. We've, we've made it through quite a few ordinances. You'll see five under first read ordinances tonight to repeal. This is based on obviously consulting with staff and Sean. We are finding ordinances that no longer apply and have been replaced by other things. We are also, there's also a category for time-bound ordinances. We don't need to do anything with them, but we are noting those. As you know, you will see things like each annual budget will fight, will be under those. There are some with no changes. And then we have a list of ones that's either need a little bit of review, of, you know, a small confirmation or a little bit more of an overhaul. So that, that's the longer list on here. And we, we put together who we need to go to for some of that confirmation and some dates. And then we're meeting about every other week. So I think the process is going really well. And if Kelsey didn't send them out today, you'll see, you should see tomorrow the next batch.
One more quick comment. And one of the things that we had talked about two meetings ago is trying to do these all at once as opposed to separating them out. So as the mayor mentioned, on, on some of the repeals or some of the ones we may need to tinker or change, we'd like to try to do that in just one meeting so that we can go through all of them as a whole to get through as many as we possibly can. Hopefully before the end of the year, but if, you know, if we, if we need to do an extension, we certainly will.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. So on to the mayor's report. Oh gosh. Lots of things happened, happened over the last week or so and then upcoming. We had the quarterly meeting for the Greater Spokane Incorporated ADO. Great time to spend with some of our, our business leaders in Spokane as well as, well, I guess when I think about it, there's only one other elected there, which is again, kind of, kind of sad. So Mayor Lisa Brown, Brown was there. And speaking of her, Mark and I had a 30-minute conversation with her the following day. She, they had reached, her office had reached out and just wanted to get together to see if there's anything we need to work on together. We, we only had 30 minutes. We just touched on, you know, the regional homeless.
Coalition.
Coalition. Thank you very much. We talked about, you know, the, the elephant in the room that I really didn't want to bring up, but we kind of had to with regards to the city putting the, the utility tax on Spokane County for one of the treatment plants that would affect those customers that have, have their water provided by Consolidated. Oh gosh, we talked about, I brought up, you know, street transportation projects and I-90 and how important it is for the entire region to come together on that. I think what else, Marker?
Those are the main topics.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Yeah. So again, it was very short meeting. We'll be keeping in touch as needed. Couple of the other commissions I'm on boards of, yes, go ahead.
In your conversation with Mayor Brown, did you discuss their regional emergency communication commission?
We did. Yeah. So I don't know. Yeah, we did. Maybe a whole nother discussion. So, so I don't know. You guys should have all received that letter that she wrote back to Shrek. Hope, it sounds like, and Mark, correct me if my impression was wrong, it sounds like that she agrees that we do need the regional approach, but that there are some things in, in their mind that need to be touched on again and re, and looked at again. Obviously, it's much less expensive to update what we've got versus them standing up something separately. So yeah, thanks, Dan. I totally forgot about that one. So it'll, it'll be an interesting ongoing conversation. We made it that. So Visit Spokane, it's kind of on, we're on hiatus for for, for the summer, though I did have a conversation with Rose Noble, their CEO. They are still working on our updated fun graphic map for Liberty Lake. You know, those pink ones that have been so popular over the years, they're updating that for us. They're also working on the restaurant video. And she and I are, and are working on a time just do an update meeting, Mark and I as to what they're, what they're doing for us here in Liberty Lake and the other things. Obviously, Visit Spokane is extremely excited at the potential of Topgolf coming because they can use that as a, as a selling point for their conventions and, and conferences that come here. I mean, what better way than say, hey, we've got this great facility 20 minutes from downtown. It's a really good selling point and will really help them. Upcoming hub, All-Star Breakfast is coming up in several weeks here. Like Annie said, Washington Collective Elected Leadership Institute, we've got that at the end of the month. Got the Mayor's Exchange coming up in the beginning of October. And so many other things, but those are the ones off the top of my head. Councilmember Dan? I thought you had your questions up. Okay. All right. So that's enough for me for tonight. We will move. I thought you had your questions up. Okay. All right. So that's enough for me for tonight. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you look at the report and um, forecast over the next couple of weeks, the events and reminders, as Councilmember Kurtz mentioned, day after tomorrow, uh, school starts for all students. And so keep that in mind as you're traveling on the roadways. Um, also that day later in the evening, starting at five thirty PM at the Liberty Lake Municipal Library, we're gonna have the library community open house. Janey's gonna talk more about this later, but this is another opportunity for uh, members of the public to come out, patrons of the library to come out and offer input uh, with respect to the ongoing design and construction project. So uh, keep that in mind, five thirty PM, uh, Liberty Lake Municipal Library, uh, Community Open House. Um, Rotary Rim Ride is happening on the seventh and eighth. Um, you'll have a lot of riders coming through town. There are multiple events that you can still register for. Um, from very short rides to very long rides. Check out their website and see if there's something for you. Uh, but also another good reminder to keep your eyes open. Shortly after September fifth, you'll have hundreds, possibly thousands of bike riders coming through town. Um, and then uh, Town Hall is gonna happen a week from tonight on September the tenth. You've got an agenda in front of you and based on the feedback from the last meeting, we've incorporated that uh, into this and we're considering this a final agenda. Obviously, we can tweak this between now and the tenth if we need to, but based on your feedback from the last meeting, we uh, made some changes and uh, among those, uh, you'll see that we extended the end time to eight thirty. Um, and we also clarified a couple of the items um, in each of the sections there. Um, and so we're looking forward to having that uh, occur on September the tenth.
I'm sorry, it will be eight thirty?
End time, eight thirty, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, following day is Patriot Day or National Day of Remembrance uh, for September eleventh. The following Saturday, Cops Cars and Cruisers will happen at Meadowwood Technology Park. The current episode of the podcast, if you're interested in Cops Cars and Cruisers and kind of the origins of it, how it all gets put together, who's involved, is currently available. John Bujoza is the guest. Um, and David asked me to point out that it is already moving its way up the um, listened to roster, right? So this is a popular topic. Lots of people have already listened. If you want to learn more about it, go check it out. Um, and then as the mayor mentioned before, a couple of weeks out on the twenty first of September, uh, the Suicide Awareness Five K, I don't believe there is a registration requirement. I believe it's a come and, and, and participate. Um, and we'll be able to brief this again at the meeting uh, in two weeks. Any questions about those events before we move on?
What time do they start?
Eight.
Eight o'clock in the morning?
Eight, the, the five K is eight AM.
The five K?
The five K is eight AM. Uh, Darren, nine AM.
Okay.
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, it, it's been moved. So last year it was in the unshaded part of the Meadowhead Tech Campus. It's moved now to the kind of the northwest corner where more of the trees are. So we're very excited to see that because it was a bit warm over the last couple of years.
And I'm gonna invite Janey up to the podium. We've got just a quick briefing uh, for you um, on the library designing construction project. We are currently in the programming phase. And uh, Janey's gonna talk you through a couple of updates.
Hi, council. So I'm gonna start with a review of our current timeline. On July second, you all approved um, our contract with Turner Townsend and Hury. And we had our project kickoff here on July eleventh. Um, I'm sure you guys have heard us a lot. Um, during the month of August, we have been pushing our community input survey. Um, we've been looking to um, looking out for our community to identify priorities that they have with this library project. Um, we closed the survey on um, this past Saturday.
Thirty first, yep.
Thirty first, thank you. And we got five hundred and seventeen responses. I'm absolutely thrilled um, with the um, response that we got from our community. Um, next slide. So coming up on Thursday, I'm gonna encourage you all to come to our community open house. Um, we are gonna have two conceptual layouts for um, our community to look at. These layouts are staff-driven. We don't have a design firm in contract yet. So these are just ideas that we've as, as a staff have worked with um, BCR and with Jonathan to develop. Basically, what we're trying to do is give you an idea of what you can get for your money instead of just throwing out a random dollar amount and being like, that's the number we decided. This can kind of give us a more dialed-in number of what um, we can get for our bank for our buck. So this is the conceptual layout one. And then Evan, if you go to the next slide, we'll have a conceptual layout two. And so what we're looking for you guys to do is we're really hoping you can come out on Thursday and you can take a look at these designs more in detail. You can listen to what community members are saying and kind of get an idea. Um, before we come back to you on the seventeenth with our formal presentation with Jonathan and with our BCR. And um, so you guys can kind of look at what you're looking at before. It's just, you know, deer in the headlights, night of. So um, that's kind of what I'm hoping that you guys can do is just come out on Thursday, engage with the community, take a look at the designs, and then we can meet back here on the seventeenth for an in-depth conversation and going through everything much more formally and in, in detail. Um, next slide, Evan. So again, our open house is on Thursday from five thirty to seven thirty at the library. Hope to see you there.
And if I can clarify, just a couple of things. I want council to understand if, Evan, if you go back to the conceptual layouts, the, 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 the driver of cost uh, for this project, we, we have a, we have a building, right? So, so the design for the open house primarily is to get uh, as, as Janey mentioned, these are, these are staff-driven uh, translated by Turner Townsend, Harry Yen team um, into likely uh, optimization of the space that we have available to do the things that, that we need the library to do. So what we're asking from the public when they attend the open house is to tell us if your future vision of the library, if, if in order for the library to provide the services that you expect, does this layout match your expectation, right? So for example, if we said, take all the bathrooms and put them up on the left side, right? Uh, Turner Townsend and Hury would say, that's gonna be incredibly expensive and it's not gonna get you anything, right? And so this uh, community open house is, is not, we're, we're not asking the public to um, decide on furniture or uh, fixtures or anything like that. We're, we're asking them to say, does this layout based upon the allocation of space to these purposes kind of meet your vision and needs for the future of the library? Um, and we're asking them to say, yeah, I like that. No, I don't like that as much. And like Janey pointed out, we have two conceptual layouts that are both workable. And what we tried to do and what we asked Turner and Townsend Hury to do was give us the most for the MEPs, the mechanical engine, uh, electrical and plumbing changes that are going to drive the, the cost of this project. And so minimize those as much as you can, but meet our needs. And that's what they've tried to translate into these two conceptual layouts.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Janey?
Oh, probably more for staff, I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, this is great. Something for us to look at. Uh, could staff supply us with blowups of these so we can see the square footage and, and what is being proposed here? Hard copies.
We, we can certainly provide you hard copies. I don't know that we have any square footage. Well, is that on there, Janey?
I thought I saw some square footage.
Yeah, it's just tiny. So you can't see it from the map, but it is on here.
That's why I say we can supply the council with blowups of these. It'd be great that we get a better idea when we show up for the meeting.
Yes, on Thursday, um, BCR is bringing printouts for people to look at and large ones on poster boards for people to see. So but I'd love for you to come on Thursday and get those as well.
Yeah.
I'd like to have it if I can before the meeting. Thank you.
All right. And then switching to uh, the twenty twenty four Community Satisfaction Survey. We talked about this before at a high level. What you have in front of you printed out is a draft version of a final report. Um, and Councilmember Spencer and Councilmember Kurtz, you should have received this via email. This is, this is a draft. I, I did not print draft on it because I did not want the printed draft to take away from anything that you might see on, on some of the data. But really what this is, is, is um, first attempt to put a draft report together that we would propose now to take to the Community Engagement Commission's next meeting, which is gonna be on September eighteenth, and get their feedback um, and, and move towards a final uh, report that we would publish on our website. And so to remind council, this is the result of the uh, satisfaction survey that we um, randomly selected six hundred and sixty residential households to receive and hopefully respond to. Uh, we ended up only getting a hundred and seventy-three responses out of that. And so one of our primary objectives for next year is trying to figure out how to improve that response rate. And we have some ideas. Um, but that's the primary objective. But if, the, the purpose of this data is to help inform not only our uh, delivery of services on a day-to-day basis, but also our twenty twenty-five budget. Um, and so if you look through, we'll be happy to entertain any questions, um, any suggestions for different presentation of information. Um, but as you can see, uh, this is already twenty-plus pages. And so our, our desire is to keep it as concise as possible, but also make it as informative and meaningful as possible. And so if, and I know you've just seen this, um, so if you have any immediate uh, thoughts on layout presentation, we'd love to hear them. Otherwise, we're going to have a fuller discussion with the Community Engagement Commission on the eighteenth of September.
Great. Any questions? Doesn't look like it.
And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have the Community Engagement Commission. Welcome, Robin.
Down a little bit, okay? Excellent PowerPoint presentation. And so tonight, what I would like to provide presentation on is sort of it'd be an annual report. So every year, if we can go to the next slide now. So our annual report, it's done, it's always done from August to August. August of the previous year to then the August of the current year, which is now. And it looks at, starts out with an introduction, some accomplishments, goes into the twenty twenty-five expectations and plans, and then the budget and the exhibits. Why we combine the budget and the annual report is because they're pretty much due at the same time. It made sense to combine that. So what I'd like to do is, if you can go now to the next slide. Looking at some of the recent activities, we, some of these are very standard for us, like the farmer's market, the barefoot in the park, working with other departments. We're working right now, supporting other city departments, planning regarding the comprehensive plan update, the library design, working with the library for their campaign, for their outreach and community engagement. And of course, we, and as mentioned, September fifth and the tenth, we have the fifth being the library open house and the September tenth being town hall meeting and continuing support for those two events too. And then we'll also continue having the monthly CEC meetings. Next slide, please. Okay, so there's always, within the report, there's just, I call it the fun stuff. And it's just, it's the things that we do that are really give, I believe, one of the most important areas of community outreach. So looking at, I'm gonna, I was requested and asked if I could take one of the props and bring it live to the council.
So I don't know.
Councilmember Kennedy, we worked several times out there at the farmer's market. So looking up there, it shows some photos of the barefoot in the park. And we usually have some type of little, like this year was just opening the farmer's market, favorite spring event. People were engaged. And there was a, with the library, there was, I did do a fairly large poster of that. It was to try and get the wow factor, looking at the theme, getting it some whimsical attributes and to get some of the public really asking the questions and looking at what we had there because we also had the other display. And that was, we each had four questions each week. One was on books. You see up there was a new library play inside playground equipment inside or outside or yeah, the fixed or was it flexible play structure? And we also had the new library question of you want public computers, um, you want more isolated or individual workspaces. Those are just some of those. So that display I felt was successful and really provided many of the results. Next slide, please. I wanna sort of focus on some of the, what I found out and on the takeaways for that library outreach. I call it phase one. And it was interesting being out there on how many of the public did not know about the library, that we'd even purchased property, wanted to know where it's at, very interested in it. So that was an interesting little takeaway. Another one is that we could have never done this type of an outreach without that collaborative teamwork effort. It involved the library staff, the CEC, and the friends of the library. That was really important. And I, I know that our bylaws talk about being collaborative and cooperative, but this was really a part where I thought the teamwork effort worked and the results I thought were very positive on the results that we did receive. So another thing, I think everybody, if from last year and the time I spent with the CEC, can't help it, but I like dots. And so, and so we recently uh, got a magnetic whiteboard and we have magnetic dots. And I found the public really liked that also. And the kids liked it. All the ages liked it. It was one of those fun things. And so I added to the toolkit this year was people that came up and participated, got them, they got stickers too. And they really liked that. So I thought those were really successful techniques. Put them away in the toolkit for next year and for future. So uh, many of the demographics, I noticed that especially at the farmer's market, they all participated and we, we received many responses. I felt we're real positive. Next slide. Um, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. We appreciate it. Okay, next up, Spokane Valley Fire Department. Welcome back.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Uh, Chief Soto was unable to attend today, so I'm filling in. I'm Tom Hatley. I'm Deputy Chief of uh, Administrative Services at, or Support Services, excuse me, at Spokane Valley Fire Department. And I'm here tonight to kind of go over what uh, Spokane Valley Fire Department's been doing for the past month and past year. So um, currently, uh, get our numbers for August. Next slide. So currently in the month of August, Spokane Valley Fire Department ran on over two thousand calls. Next slide. And again, that's kind of the area of concentration of where the majority of our calls have been going over for the past month. Excuse me, yeah, two thousand calls for the month and so forth. Next slide. So for the year, we've had sixteen thousand calls. So we're as of coming into August, we're at sixteen thousand. Uh, of course, you look at those, the majority of those are EMS calls. Next slide. And again, this is for the year, our concentration of uh, called volume. And again, you look at all those red spots, that is usually like to say it's station one, station eight, and station seven. So those are our busiest stations in the core. That is usually like to say it's Station 1, Station 8, and Station 7. So those are our busiest stations in the core. Uh, next slide. Kind of our breakdown of all the apparatus that we currently have responding, Valley Engine 1, again, down in that main area is one of our busiest engine companies. Again, with Valley Engine 8 coming in second, and then of course, Valley Engine 7. Next slide. And again, just going over the busy station, Station 8, the reason why it's so high is we definitely, we run two vehicles out of that station. We're in a ladder truck and a engine company. So that's why the numbers kind of show that station being a lot more busier than the other ones. Next slide. We received help from the City of Spokane on 47 calls. Fire District 8's come into the district, 37 calls, and then Fire District 20, or Fire District 9's coming into our district, 29 calls. And then we responded into District 8 and City and then of course, District 9 as well. Uh, next slide. This was kind of really the telltale sign. Again, we talk about how busy we've been getting over the time. Right now, where this is the second busiest August on record. We're 5.3% ahead of last year's call volume. Again, numbers are, again, just on the uptick and just more and more people that are coming in and more and more calls. So it's definitely putting a strain on our services. Next slide. And we'll go right into what we've been doing for, providing for the City of Liberty Lake. Next slide. For the month, we ended up going on 113 calls. Again, the majority of those are medical. Uh, we did have some MVAs, some building alarms. We did add a couple brush fires, couple structured fires, and then so forth. So we even had a technical rescue where a vehicle went into the building. So next slide. Again, concentration of the calls that we're dealing with here in City Liberty Lake. And next slide. Again, for the year, Station 3, of course, our company that's been here the most, again, going in city. 878 calls. Next slide. Again, a breakdown. Where the call volume was anticipated. And next slide. 162 calls for the month. And then we'll next slide. Just going to run right through this thing quick. And again, as we talked about, overall, as this was our busiest, getting second busiest in our district. It's also been the third busiest here in City Liberty Lake for our record call volume. So again, showing you the numbers. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions? Yes.
I do. Are those two big dots? Are those both guardian angel and big Samaritan?
That is correct.
Don't forget to use your mics. Yep. Sorry about that. Yes, I'm turning the other way. Yeah.
Yes, those are the, the majority of those calls are those medical calls that we respond to those facilities. Yes.
Yeah. Hi. Uh, where's Station 8, the one that's so busy?
It's off Pines. That's where our administration station is off, where the DOT shed is, right off Pines, or to the south.
Okay. And where did the vehicle go into the building in Liberty Lake? I thought, I heard about the mall.
Now, there was another one. There's this right out here. It was very minor, but it was vehicle.
It was the Rockwood Medical Facility over there behind Yokes.
So a lot, it's been, like, say, a lot of variety of calls that we've had to deal with here lately.
Thank you. Someone done?
Yeah, I'm just really grateful for the agency's work on the Simron fire. If you have any notes on it.
Yeah, I was on that one last night with the crews and still under determination of what caused that. Crews got on it pretty quick. And again, we were very thankful. We didn't have any wind and got air resources out there. Dozer, freehand crews. And again, we had a lot of resources, a lot of mutual aid resources coming in as well as far as south as Fairfield coming in. So we had, we, we loaded the gun, making sure that we had all the resources in place. And thank goodness, we didn't need to use them. So
really grateful for the work of the agency. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did you, any of you have to respond to that wolf lodge fire?
We ended up sending an engine over there, correct? Yes. Yeah. And that was kind of a very tragic event too. It's very sad. So but yeah, we did assist them. I believe there was can't quote, but I mean, there was multiple agencies throughout Spokane County as well as.
I think it was, I read like something like 11 different agencies responded to it.
Yeah, it was. By the time we, we were there, it was pretty much very sad, very sad loss.
All right. Any else, someone else have any questions?
And then I did, uh, we did finally, finally finish our strategic plan and our annual report. And I did have, pass that out to you guys for information. If you guys have any questions, again, contact Chief Soto or myself and get that too.
Right.
And thank you. I want to thank you and the community for coming in and helping us put the strategic plan together without your involvement. And we want to make sure our agency improves and having input from you and community to better our service is definitely much appreciated. And thank you for taking your time to come and spend the day with us and addressing some of the things that we can work on. So
Right. Looking forward to reading this.
Yes.
Thanks for all your work.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks. Right. Next up, Liberty Lake Stream Water District. Welcome.
It's down for the short people. You hear me? Hi, Khatam Nataraja in Liberty Stream Water District. Most importantly, I want you to recognize what I'm wearing, shorts and football. Because I want to announce that we've decided to extend summer for two more weeks. So nice 90-degree weather, very nice and sunny and warm. So I just want you guys to know that. We, I don't have anything really. There, there was a lake treatment last week, Wednesday. Super mild herbicide for milfoil. We do it once a year. This one that we use this year was mild enough, there was no restrictions on using the lake at all. I stayed out for 48 hours, but anyway, that was, it was super mild. Uh, and I hope that the county parks get me open next year because I, it's terrible that everyone missed a chance to use the county park. Uh, and if there's anything we can do to work with the City of Liberty Lake to help make sure that the county is on top of that, uh, over the winter, absolutely, please, let's work together. Because that's a huge community amenity that it was really, really sad that that was shut down all summer long, even, even fenced off the water side of it, which was kind of crazy.
I'm not quite sure how much influence we have there.
Yeah, well, I, I know it's different agencies, but you know, at some point, if, if they need input from folks, I, you know, like our organization's working together, making sure that they know that's a big deal. I think might help. And I noticed that the planes were flying over Liberty Lake to get water. I, I don't know where from, but the gentleman left, but we're happy to make sure to share the water if we need it for a fire. I don't know what the rules are for that, but I was surprised to see him flying over to like in Idaho and then coming back again, some of those air resources. So anyway.
Maybe there's already people out skiing that.
Well, yeah, that's what I figured. It probably was too busy. That's all I have. Unless there's any questions. What? Yeah, yeah, I know. It's been, and it's kind of exciting to see. So we ran outside to, because we heard the planes coming. We knew about the Simron fire and then just watched them fly right over into Idaho. It's kind of weird. And it took them a while. So I mean, that, it's a time issue too. Any questions for me, concerns about anything? Yes, sir.
Just one, uh, I don't know if you've seen the community satisfaction survey, but very last question. Overall, how would you rate the quality of the following services provided by partners? Drinking water is number one.
Oh, excellent. So good. Well, we've managed to irritate some of our constituents that are on and around the lake. We had a really interesting last sort of six to eight months. So I'm glad to see that that's a, that came back.
They didn't take the survey.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's right. They're outside of the city, right? Perfect. Let's keep it that way. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much. All right, we are up to general business consent agenda.
Uh, Mayor, make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items 10A and B.
Second.
We have a second. Who did I hear that from? Councilmember Kennedy. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, including August 20th, 2024 meeting minutes and the September 3rd, 2024 vouchers. Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 7-0.
Make a motion to approve general business, uh, item 11A, the interlocal agreement with the Spokane Valley Fire Department.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Kennedy. All right, discussion or questions on this one?
Just know a great opportunity of collaboration with the agencies in our community. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving the interlocal agreement with Spokane Valley Fire Department, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Make a motion to approve general business item 11B, authorizing a payment of Winter Glow invoice in the amount of $12,000 from the Parks and Arts, based on the Parts and Arts Commission recommendation.
Second.
A couple seconds. Councilmember Dunn is our second winner this time. All right, any further discussion on this item, Councilmember Kennedy?
Our question, yeah. The $10,000 figure, we've been using that, I think, I think since day one for the last several years. So I'm encouraged to see that, you know, we're going to go 20% and bring it up to 12,000. I guess my question would be to the committee would be this, that is a 20% of the realistic number that is needed? On it, I think sometimes committees might look at is that I think we can get by for this. And I think in government, we don't have to always look at it that way. That I would rather see this because it's a great event. It brings in a lot of joy to the people and stuff. Is the 20% really adequate? Or should it have been a little higher? So I would like comment, you're comfortable with the 20%? Okay. Oh, well, that's not bad.
Well, and a reminder, there's another, another chance to donate from our own pockets to Winter Glow at the dinner and auction on October 19th at Mirabou. So all right. Uh, Councilmember Wald, did I see your hand?
Well, specifically, what is it on October 19th?
It's the dinner and auction. You can get more information.
For the, but is specifically for Winter Glow?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. If I don't, don't see any other questions, um, all in favor of approving the Winter Glow spectacular sponsorship in the amount of $12,000.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 7-0.
Make a motion to approve general business item 11C, the Growth Management Act periodic update grant for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Thank you. I have a second from Councilmember Dunn. Questions? Lisa's here. If anybody has questions. All right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving the GMA periodic update grant for fiscal year 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
And make a motion to approve general business item 11D, the city hall parking lot paving in the amount of $24,089.
We have a second.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Dunn. Now, this is, um, I figure there's probably questions on this. Mark, you want to take this? Lisa, Kyle, just to give you guys an update as to where this came from.
Sure. And Ben is online too, if there are any questions about schedule or anything. So, so essentially, you've all parked in the parking lot. Um, there, there was some concern about the condition of the parking lot after last winter. And so there, there is a project currently on the capital facilities plan to do a, a complete overhaul of the city hall parking lot to include significant stormwater updates. This is not that. This is essentially to, um, do a more permanent repair of the drive lane around the, kind of the, the horseshoe and out to the entrance to the street so that we don't have the potential, so that we reduce the potential for any potential injury of anyone crossing the parking lot. That was the big concern. And so that's what this is designed to do. It's a temporary fix until we get the longer term capital project, uh, which is still several years out on the CFP.
And the timing, when they said we can do it over what, two days?
It's, it's a two-day job, so it's a relatively short job. We're going to schedule it on a Thursday and a Friday of some week. Ben, do we have a firm schedule yet?
Hey, can you hear me, Mark?
Yes.
So we don't have a firm schedule yet. I think we were waiting till, uh, council, uh, approved or disapproved. Uh, we'll get back to the contractor as soon as we get the go-ahead. And we'll be able to schedule them in the coming weeks. It could take a few weeks though, uh, before we actually get it on the schedule.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, I, I noticed in the parking lot here, some of, some of the road is deteriorated towards literally falling apart. So I'm understanding this, that this is just simple, a simple repair at this point? Repair and overlay.
So it's, it's more.
Repairing it all out and doing it properly.
So it's more than just a patch. So imagine coming in from the driveway uh, and going around, uh, up to the door and back around it. It kind of makes a P if you're looking at it from an overhead. So there's going to be a grind and overlay of that P.
Oh, okay. All right. That's what I was after. Thank you.
Right. And we're looking for that to last as what Mark, you and I talked earlier, about four or five years.
Lisa, any, that it, that would be the expectation. Yes, at least that.
All right. Any males have any questions? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving the city hall parking lot paving in the amount of $24,089, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We are up to council comments. Any comments from council, aside from future workshops? Don't see any. All right. Public hearings and appeals. We have a public hearing on the stormwater management plan. Lisa, welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Um, Evan, can you pull up my presentation, please? Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, I just wanted to, uh, kind of recap the process that we've been through. We started this back in 2022. Um, we got the grant in 2021 and then it took ecology about nine months to actually get us a contract. But we started in 2022, um, uh, and we worked, we began collecting data, et cetera. Um, and, uh, we've had a number of workshops with city council and just wanted to summarize the fact that we have talked about this. And so I'm just going to give you the high-level recap since we've been through this a couple times this year. This will be our fifth, our fifth presentation to you this year. Next slide, please. So I just want to, uh, remind you that, that we established a vision and mission for the Stormwater Master Plan as a fully functional, achievable, and sustainable stormwater system that's integrated into the landscape, supports and visions growth, protects residents, and nurtures the environment. Next slide, please. Um, and the, so the, the, the Stormwater Management Plan that is before you, um, and will be, we will be looking at an ordinance later on, um, addresses program goals, background conditions, and, uh, data gaps, and characteristics of the built environment, the stormwater capital improvement projects, uh, programmatic activities, operation and maintenance, and then financing and rates, and an implementation plan. Next slide, please. So, um, we started the process really doing stormwater mapping and data collection. And, and so just a summary of the stormwater, um, infrastructure that we have within the city. Next slide, please. And we did that really because, uh, first of all, we, the, the, this Stormwater Management Plan, or as we refer to it as the swamp, was funded through a grant, uh, from Washington Department of Ecology. In part because due to our population, we were approaching, um, the expectation that we were going to have to, uh, file for a municipal separate stormwater sewer system permit under the National Pollution, um, Discharge, um, Permit System, the NPDES, as it were. Um, city was, uh, granted, uh, the city was granted a waiver from this MS4 permitting requirement in August 23, in part due to the work that we did in the data collection. And, uh, we were able to demonstrate that our city landscape is dominated by relatively low runoff and poorly defined natural drainage. And the developed areas and their built systems collect stormwater locally, dispose of it in generally to be, to be the ground via, um, underground injection wells and dry wells. And so one of the things that, um, the, the good part of the story is we, we deal with our stormwater through swales, uh, through a, a very natural, environmentally sound treatment system. And what basically the bottom line is that for the most part, the city is not actually discharging to waters of the state, which is why we're exempt from it. That's a pretty big deal to be exempt from that because it is, the MS4 permit is really quite a bit of record keeping, quite a bit of bureaucracy to maintain over the years, and quite a bit of investment on the part of the city. Next slide, please. So that was the good news that came out of it. That was really the reason why we started this process. But again, we're also looking at 20 years, what our build out looks like, and the need to, uh, figure out. what sort of improvements we need as we build out our city. So we did go through the process of identifying capital improvement projects, and we really only had a handful of areas where we need to, because we've done a pretty good job of making sure that our stormwater system is being built as development occurs. And so, so, but we do have a few areas that we do need to address. And this was a pretty critical element to trying to get to what the rate study looked like. We also did look at what kind of our operational needs were to maintain that system over time. Next slide, please. So as part of this, and you'll recall in, in June, we presented a proposed rate increase. And this is included in the plan. So a couple of things I want to point out about this. So the annual ERU rate has not increased since 1996. And note number two is that the Spokane Rathfield Aquifer Protection Area Authorization is anticipated to sunset in December of 2025. We have funds right now to cover that. As we look at these increases, these increases that we're proposing in 2026 and beyond really are catching up with the rate increases that we, that probably should have been enacted years ago. But at, at a pace that's not going to impact, that's not going to impact the residents' pocketbook so much by waiting until the APA sunsets for those increases, and we do get some of those funding. Now, the one thing I want to say is that, and I want to pause here for a second, because I know there was some discussion about this. The proposed rate structure is, that's actually how it's presented in the plan. The plan is just advisory. And the reality is that we're not asking you to decide what rate you're going to charge for that this year. That's a function of the budget. And, and in fact, we, you couldn't adopt a future rate schedule that would bind future councils. And so, so again, I want to be clear on that, that, that this will still be before you this year as part of the budget process, if there is a desire to begin to increase those fees. But for right now, this was, this was, I think, a sustainable approach to funding our, the ongoing maintenance of our stormwater system. Next slide, please. So there were just a few minor revisions to the plan from what we presented back in July, I think. Beginning of July, related to comments that we got from ecologies, they were really ticky tack comments. We beefed up some of the language in section 1.2 to indicate when public comments were solicited on the plan. So we've had all these workshops with you and et cetera. We updated text in section 4.4 regarding the APA, which is not anticipated to be reauthorized until 2025. And at the end of that section, we also included the city's intent to continue to participate in APA education for as long as it exists, and to provide a website with links to information and resources related to stormwater and aquifer protection once the swamp has been adopted. And we actually already have a draft of that, that's ready to launch on our webpage as soon as the plan is adopted. So next slide, please. So next steps, you're going to have a first reading of the ordinance tonight. Also, council has an opportunity after this public hearing to recommend revisions, if you have any. I'm asking that that happen tonight so that we can make the changes before the second read of the ordinance in Sept, on September 17th, because we're asking you to do the final adoption on the 17th, so that we can get it to ecology, the final document, before our grant expires on September 30th. So it's, it's, it's a tight timeline, they took a little longer than we had hoped for, for reviewing the, the plan. With that, I stand for questions, and if you have none for me, it is a public hearing and you can open it up for public testimony.
Okay, before we go to a public hearing, go ahead, Councilmember Tim.
Few questions, Lisa, I think you already answered my question about table nine, that doesn't lock us in. It basically just provides an example.
Yes.
Okay, and then the previous slide, it's talking about the, the part that goes on the website. That can be on our website, that's not a separate website altogether, right?
No, it's just a page on our website, and it, and it just, all we're doing is providing links to other resources. We're not the experts on this, we have experts throughout the state and region that, in this particular area, will defer to the experts.
Thank you.
Councilmember Val, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I have a couple of questions. When I was reading all through this again, I came upon something, I was just curious what this means. The aquifer and its overlying soils are permeable to the extent that streams running off the adjacent uplands completely infiltrate into the subsurface at the margins of the aquifer. What do they mean margins, just on the edge or?
On the, on the, on the edges, like on the upper layer of the aquifer. It, it actually, what it's basically saying is that we have, we have good soils for drainage purposes. And one of the things that's interesting is that the soils actually act as a filtration system unto itself.
Okay.
With respect to the swales that are non-functioning that are on private property, does, does the plan have any current instructions or projected actions?
So it does not, so what our responsibility as a city is, for, for swales that are on private property, we have a responsibility for, if they're dealing with municipal stormwater. So, so in subdivisions where the swales are on private property treating this runoff from, from the street, we're responsible for the underground infrastructure. So if the dry well needs to be cleaned out, if there needs to be replacement, et cetera, that's, that's the city's responsibility. That's what the Stormwater Fund is about. However, the surface, the surface maintenance is the responsibility of the property owner, be it a homeowner or an HOA. So the, the cutting of the grass, et cetera. That's, that's how that works.
So to paraphrase perception, a swale is in a failure state. Our responsibility as a city is a dry well that's supporting that swale, but the, otherwise the performance of that swale is the private property owner.
Yes, again, surface repairs, surface repairs are on the property owner. If the, if, if there's additional work, it needs to be scarified or other to, to, it's gotten plugged up. And they do get plugged up with the silt, et cetera. That, that is, we have activities that we can do to improve the performance. But again, a, and that's typically only when that swale is dealing with runoff from public streets.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions, Councilmember Val?
Yeah, I have one more, just when you were referring to the second bullet there, updated, you know, text about the APA. So it is not anticipated to be, because you.
Yeah, so we had the, so, yeah, so, so the aquifer protection re-authors, the aquifer protection sunsets in December 31st of 2025. Originally, we had presented after having the county come and ask if Liberty Lake wanted to participate in that. We actually, you actually passed a resolution saying that, yes, we would.
Right.
We have found out since that, number one, Spokane Valley does not want to participate in that. They just completed a stormwater master plan and substantially increased their rates. And did not, they want to go on their own, so, so, so they didn't want to participate in that. The city of Spokane, while it was anticipated that they would this time around, they didn't participate last time. But my understanding is that because of the budget challenges that they're faced with, that they are not interested in looking at it at this time. So there's not enough of a population base to make this work. So the county is saying that unless something changes with one of the big jurisdictions, it's not likely to go forward with the reauthorization, putting it on the ballot.
Yeah, any other questions? All right, not hearing any, we will go ahead and open the public hearing at 8:06 PM. If there's anybody here in chambers who'd like to make a comment for our public hearing, please speak now or forever hold your peace. Well, go ahead, make sure you introduce yourself, what, you don't, you can fill out a thing later, go ahead and speak.
Kurtaim Nodaraj in 1525 South Lila Clay in Liberty Lake, Washington, 99019. I have a comment and a question, one, I want to, I've never heard of, of entity getting around the NPDES permit requirements. That's fantastic, so that's really impressive, I don't know if people realize how impressive that is, that's a big deal. Yeah, and my question is, are there any provisions in the, in the stormwater master plan for keeping bad things out of the stormwater? Since it does go to the aquifer, like, you know, labeling the drains, you know, you know, you've seen things that say, don't dump no waste, drains to a stream or drains to the aquifer, or trying to keep, you know, things from industrial sites or more commercial sites to try to get some of that, you know, not so clean freshwater out of the, the drains and stuff. I was just curious if that's, if there's anything in there for that. Thank you.
Thanks. In the meantime, Lisa's going to answer, in the meantime, if there's anybody online, shoot your name to our online host.
So there's state law that prevents people from dumping things into dry wells and, which are injection wells and, et cetera. The county through the APA program has been the enforcement arm of this. So we will likely need to look at what we need to do when this sunsets, if it sunsets, because we won't have an enforcement arm anymore. That may be something that we have to look at through code enforcement or something like that. And so there is, the plan doesn't address it, but the need to address it may be there if the APA sunsets.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody online who'd like to make a comment for the public hearing? Nope, all right, well, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:08, one of the longest ones we've had, I think, in a while. So, all right, so we are finished with our public hearing, we have no resolutions. We do have a plethora of first read ordinances, so I will let Kelsey go through those and read them by title, and we will see the second reads at the next meeting.
First ordinance is ordinance number 304, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting the Liberty Lake Stormwater Management Plan. Do you want me just?
Yeah, just go right on through. Unless, unless if, if council members have any questions, go ahead and stop, and just raise your hand, we'll stop, but.
All right, ordinance number 305, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the city of Liberty Lake Development Code and the River District Specific Area Plan Development Regulations. Ordinance number 3B, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number three, ordinance number three A, and ordinance number three A2, regarding payment of claims or obligations of the city. Ordinance number four A, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number four, establishing a general fund petty cash account for the city of Liberty Lake for the purpose of making minor authorized disbursements. Ordinance number eight B, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number eight, and ordinance number eight A, providing for the monthly payment of the salaries for mayor, city council and staff members. Ordinance number nine A, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number nine, establishing city holidays. Ordinance number 11A, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number 11, providing for small contract authorization.
Thank you. All right, we have no emergency ordinances, so we are up to introduction of upcoming agenda items. You have your much now shortened list of future workshops. We've gotten through our dedicated source, funding source for art. We have our September 10th Town Hall, we have three listed for the 17th, the library project budget plan, public engagement plan and position on initiatives. So unless there's any questions or changes to that, we'll go ahead and stick with that on the 17th. Capital Facilities Plan, first workshop on October 1st. And then we have our, still have our TBDs here. Are there any comments or updates on, okay, I saw you both go at the same times, so do it out.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Just for clarification, on the one that I had here of active shooter tutorial from the police department. Just for clarification, what I was referring to there is that to have somebody from the police department really gives what to do in this room.
Yep.
In the event that there was an emergency, so, so I just wanted to clarify that, I didn't think it was more complicated than to have somebody from the police department to say, duck, run.
Well, I think, we, we, we've discussed it, it, it does warrant a little bit more in-depth discussion than that. And, and since we don't want it to be a public meeting, since we don't want the public here to know what our plans are, we're working on scheduling three different sessions, so we don't have four of you here.
Thank you.
Good.
Real quickly on the October 1st meeting, I'm wondering if that gives you enough time, Mark, for staff to come back with some more ideas on the dedicated funding for arts? And I guess the second part of that question is, does that give us enough time to get it into the budget? If that's what we decide we're going to do?
I may just make some assumptions of the budget.
So we can definitely bring some options by October 1st, they're going to be high level so that we can refine them, but that gives us time to bring, say, three options back, three to four.
Okay, so then can we add that to October 1st, just so we've got it on the?
Well, I guess my question is, can, should we be moving the capital facilities plan on the first to six? Do we need that much time, and then maybe add, add a workshop for, the follow-up workshop on the art funding at seven?
Lisa, can you use the six, I mean, what, what do you anticipate the timing for that? It looks like move it to six.
I don't think it'll take that long, but again, it depends on the questions that you have and whatnot. And since I don't have it together yet, I don't know if there's any major surprises for you.
We could always schedule it at six and push it to seven if we need to, I mean, you know, schedule two of them, and if we get through, great, if not, we push it to seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, great, thanks. And, Mayor Portim, did you have, I know you were going to follow, follow up on, on your own notes on this commission?
I'm still working on that, but I'm making progress, so hopefully have an update in the next minute.
And I know we have, we have a TBD on here for October for review of the campaign ordinance in light of the latest court decision. So we will try to get that scheduled for maybe the second meeting in October. So are there any other workshops that anybody is thinking about that we need to add to the list to try to get scheduled? I'm not seeing any, awesome, great, we're going to have lots of, plenty of workshops and extra meetings for the budget coming up, so that works out really well. Okay, we are up to citizen comments again, if there's anybody in chambers who'd like to make a citizen comment, we welcome Mark Sabah back up to the podium, and while we're waiting, before you get started again, if there's anybody online who'd like to make a public comment, please shoot a note to our meeting host in the chat feature, and he will let me know.
Two things, number one, thank you, thank you, thank you, Winter Glow really appreciates what you guys have done for us in the past and now in the future. It's going to relieve a lot of pressure off us by getting that extra two grand, thank you very much. Number two, about two weeks ago, a little less, a week ago last Saturday, Popular Companion had their 14th Annual Mut Strut, and I got to tell you, it was very successful. They had over 300 people register, they had over 21 booths, this happens right in their parking lot there. This year, they had a, someone in a golf cart with an eagle emblem on it, lead the parade. And I don't know who that person was, but he had a hell of a fun time. But we also had the Ridgedine Cheerleaders, and they did Mut Strut cheers throughout the whole Mut Strut. When we started the Mut Strut, and I had looked back, because we had to stop a couple of times to let people catch up, I swear it took at least three football fields, that's how long it was, and it was very, very successful. They raised money for Spokaneville and Petsavers, never did, I haven't got the final amount that they've earned for them, but I think it was very successful, but fun event. But fun event. Looking forward to next year. My little dog, Piper, she's four months old. She studied herself throughout the whole thing for the mile and a half, and I was proud of her. So, thank you very much.
Thanks. Do we have anybody online? Thanks. All right, so we have no more comments online? Oh, oh, another.
I'm going for a reefer. This is just a quick thing. No, I was coming up, because I got Agenda Item, Public Comment, and then the public hearing. So just a quick thank you to all of you guys, folks, I'm supposed to say folks, not guys, all of you folks, for your apparently boundless dedication to the community. And I have a real story here. There's, you know, stuff goes on, and social media, things get out of hand so quick. And there's an issue right now where people are very interested in what's going to happen. And over the weekend, apparently, all kinds of rumors were floating around. And my wife said, oh, no, the whole thing's off. I said, I have a hard time believing that's off, since they're just doing the traffic studies. How could that possibly be? Back and forth. And Mayor Kaminsky, really thank you so much, because you were on top of everything in the middle of a Labor Day weekend, and made some very thoughtful, very, I thought, non-controversial comments to just share the facts with people and be transparent, and that goes so far. So I really just want to say thank you to all of you, because I know you all do this, but especially to you, Mayor, because when I saw that, my wife said, oh, no, look, Mayor Kaminsky's gone on and wrote this. It's just, I think that kind of thing helps a lot. So thank you very much.
No problem. I got out of church and turned my phone on, and I had two text messages about it. Always, always interested in getting the facts out to people and staying out of the opinions.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, no more citizen comments. So we do have three executive sessions. First one for RCW42.30.110.1C regarding real estate. A second one for RCW42.30.110.1G regarding personnel matters. And a second one for a different matter, again, RCW42.30.110.1G. There were no decisions made in these meetings, information really only. And we will adjourn when we come back out. We will be dialing in our city attorney, as well as Councilmember Kurtz and Spencer, so please be patient with us as we dial all three of you in. We expect it to be about 30 minutes, but I don't know about you guys, but could be due for a little bit of a bio break beforehand, so so 30 minutes, so, but 5 till 9, come back.
So starting at 8:25.
Starting at 8:25, and we'll expect to be back in chambers by 5 till 9. And if we need to extend, we will send somebody out. So, thanks. Mark, anything? Looks like you're going to speak.
So are we convening and adjourning each one separately?
No, no, we'll just, if it's permitted, we'll just go one right after another.
Okay.
30 minutes total, hopefully. All right, thanks, everybody. We'll see you in the other room. Well, maybe we don't have to.
The executive session is going to be extended an additional 15 minutes to return at 9:10 PM. The executive session is extended an additional 10 minutes to return at 9:20 PM.
All right, everybody, it's 9:21. We are back from executive session. There is no more business in front of the council, so we will adjourn. Have a good night.